Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome.
Good evening. Let us pray. Source of all, we gather here in this place to speak, to listen, and to make decisions regarding this place we call Norfolk. As we do, we ask that you would help us to be ever aware of your presence with us. Send forth your wisdom to dwell within each of us, and particularly the members of our City Council. Each of them has been given a mighty responsibility by you and your people. Along with wisdom, may they serve with humility, patience, kindness, and love, all of the things that you demonstrate to us. We lift to you all who seek to overcome a storm, and humbly ask that you would grant your peace to us all this day. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please call and roll. Ms. Graves?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. McClellan?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
Here.
The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of our previous meeting. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Good evening. For the benefit of those who do not regularly attend, the City Council meetings, our procedures to first take up ceremonial items, next we'll take up public hearings, then the consent agenda, which will be voted on in a block. Any member of the council or the public wishes to discuss an item, it will be moved from the block and considered separately. Following the consent agenda, we will take up regular agenda items in order as they appear on the docket. Upon the completion of the regular agenda, we will take up any new business that come before the council. To address the council, you should have registered with the clerk outside in lobby prior to 7:00 PM. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name, and please limit your remarks to three minutes.
Mr. Clerk, we have no ceremony items? PH1. Public hearing runs scheduled for this day on the application of Norfolk Building Corporation for change of zoning from R8 Single Family to R9 Single Family on property at 1101 through 1113 East Lester Avenue.
Lee Sester.
Close enough.
Mike Sester? Mr. Clerk, there's applicant Jerome Miller is here to answer any questions, and do we need to have a presentation?
We got a letter from the military supporting.
Is there a recognition from staff?
Go, Lenny. This is an item that was continued from here in order to get the feedback from the Navy. It's a request to change the zoning on a piece of property to allow the addition of one more house. Under the current zoning, you could build three houses; under the proposed zoning, you could build four. The ACUS zone ran through the back of the property, and it was a concern on one part that we did not want to be increasing density in any area where we have accident potential zones. The Navy and the property owner have come to an easement agreement that will restrict building on the back part of it that removes the portion of land that's in the ACUS. The staff's recommendation was not to support it because at the same time, our general plan out there provides a density that essentially says, build back three lots on it, that's in keeping with the character of the area, four is one more. But that's where staff was.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, would you like to make any comments? All right? Mr. Clerk? I have an ordinance to rezone property located at 1101 to 1113 East...
Lee Sester.
Lee Sester Avenue from...
Lester.
No, it's not Lester. Lee Chester. I think there's a silent H hidden in there.
It's Lee Sester.
Okay. From that avenue, from R8 Single Family to R9 Single Family. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
As a former planning commissioner, I'm really challenged by this. I appreciate that the Navy has said that they, and the owner has agreed to create that easement. We don't want to ever make this mistake of increasing density in an ACUS zone. So we're not doing that. But we are creating an instance where we're increasing density or creating density that's against the plan. So I vote no.
Mr. Riddick?
I'm gonna vote aye, and I say Lee Sester because back in 70, when I drove yellow cabs, that's how to dispatch. Vote aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Is there a motion to change the name of that street?
At least the pronunciation.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Dr. Whibley?
No.
Mr. Alexander?
No.
The motion fails for four. PH2. Public hearing two scheduled for this day to hear comments on accepting the boundary settlement between the City of Norfolk and Cynthia B. Brock regarding property located in the county of Isle of Wight, and authorizing the city manager to execute the deed of boundary settlement and plat on behalf of the city. Mr. Clerk, no one has scheduled to speak. Please call the question. I have an ordinance accepting the boundary settlement between the City of Norfolk and Cynthia B. Brock regarding property located in Isle of Wight County, and authorizing the city manager to execute the deed of boundary settlement and plat on behalf of the city. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
PH3. Public hearing three scheduled for this day to hear comments on the conveyance of the City of Norfolk's interest, if any, in a certain parcel of land known as 3101 Pretty Lake Avenue to Christopher D. and Deborah J. Lutz by quitclaim deed. Mr. Clerk, please call and roll. I have an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of the City of Norfolk's interest, if any, in a certain parcel of land known as 3101 Pretty Lake Avenue to Christopher D. and Deborah J. Lutz by quitclaim deed. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R1? R1 is an ordinance accepting the bid submitted by 161 Granby Street LLC for a garage parking agreement with a term of 20 years for the lease of 56 parking spaces in the Freemason Street Garage located at 161 Freemason Street in the City of Norfolk, with the option to relocate spaces as available, and the Bush Street Garage located at 112 West City Hall Avenue in the City of Norfolk. Call and roll. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R2? An ordinance approving a lease agreement between Granby Street Properties LLC as lessor and the City of Norfolk as less leave for the lease of property owned by Granby Street Properties LLC located at 100 Brook Avenue, authorizing the city manager to execute the lease agreement on behalf of the city, and authorizing the expenditure of a sum of up to $458,296.19 from funds heretofore appropriated to cover the rent payments for the remainder of the fiscal year 2017-2018. Mr. Clerk, call and roll.
Yeah, so for this, this runs through May of next year, and then we reconsider it or what?
No, this is a five-year agreement.
So this is, we talked about this some last time. This is what we sent it, thank you. We sent into the information, but this is actually a...
First, you had it 10 years, right?
Could go to 10, and we renew after five.
Right, okay.
Each year, you'd have to appropriate the funds.
Okay.
But is this the appropriation just for the one year?
One year, okay.
Yes.
All right, okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Riddick?
I'm good.
Okay. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R4? An ordinance granting the acquisition of certain parcels of property located at 2101 Silbert Road for the purpose of a stormwater quality project and public green space, and authorizing the expenditure of a sum of up to $151,000 from funds heretofore appropriated for acquisition of the property and all related transactional costs. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R4? An ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain parcels of property located at 2101 Silbert Road for the purpose of a stormwater quality project and public green space, and authorizing the expenditure of a sum of up to $151,000 from funds heretofore appropriated for acquisition of the property and all related transactional costs. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R5? An ordinance approving a garage parking agreement between the Hermitage Foundation as lessor and the City of Norfolk as less leave for the lease of a portion of property located at 7637 North Shore Road, and authorizing the city manager to execute the lease agreement on behalf of the city, dispensing with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R6? An ordinance granting GEC MC 2006 CI East City Hall Avenue LLC permission to encroach into the right-of-way of 216 East Bloom Street at 223 City Hall Avenue approximately 63 square feet for the purpose of outdoor dining, and improving the terms and conditions of the encroachment agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R7? An ordinance approving a garage parking agreement between 450 Bush LLC and the City of Norfolk for the lease of 75 parking spaces for a term of five years in the York Street Garage located at 215 West York Street in the City of Norfolk, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R9? An ordinance to repeal one subsection each of Sections 25-649, 653, and 654, and to amend and reordain Sections 25-649, 651, 52, 53, and 54 of the Norfolk City Code 1979, so as to add two new right turn on red prohibitions, one new U-turn prohibition, one new one-way street, one new yield intersection, and 13 new stop intersections. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R11? R10, Mr. Riddick.
R10.
An ordinance to amend and reordain Section 2.1-11 of the Norfolk City Code 1979 as amended so as to add one new subsection authorizing the city manager to convert special project positions to permanent classified positions. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R11? An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment named Saboro Carabeno on property located at 7616 Sulz Point Road. By a five-year vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. All right, Javah Haver? Haver? Yes, please come.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here on behalf of a small restaurant. It's a family business. It's me, my wife, my daughter. We have here in Norfolk, it's on 7616 Sulz Point Road. We are a small family business. We close 8:00. We home by 6:00 on Sunday. And by the opposition of the lady, we basically are not entertaining. We only seat 32 people, and we don't have any bar or anything like that. We just seeking to serve beer or wine to our customers that come to eat for lunch and early dinner.
You sell alcohol at what time?
We open from 8 to 8. We don't, we're working on getting the ABC license for to serve the beer and wine to our customers.
At 8:00, six days a week?
Yes, sir.
That's too, that's too much.
We open from 8 to 8, but on Sunday, we close at 6:00. So we are not a club. We're just a restaurant. We serve food.
So you could serve breakfast and serve mimosas if you had a wine license? You could, they could have mimosas at 8:00 in the morning? I mean, that's really not a big deal.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mary Simpson Jones?
Mama, you got bootlegged in your neighborhood.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm the president of Oakwood Civic League. As you know, in the month of July, I was in the hospital when all this information came out via email. As you know, the city used to send things by paper. So in my condition, I did not read my email from what the man told me in planning that they had sent me an email. But I went back on the 24th, and it was in my junk and trash mail. I didn't find out until the 22nd, when Ms. McDonald called me to ask me what was my objections to this establishment. If we go by protocol, protocol is they supposed to come to the Civic League. The Civic League did not know they had changed management on several occasions. The picture you have on the screen of this restaurant, if they gonna serve 35 people and there's only 28 spaces, tell me what they gonna do when they have a truck from a contractor sitting there all day long? Civic League does not meet during the month of June through August. So all of this was done without our knowledge. So boy had come to us or whomever two years ago. We thought that they were the same management. So from reading the documentation, which I received the day that I came here to object, I didn't know all this information. And with the businesses they say they have around them, there's a church right across the street, a large church, and you gonna serve drinks at 11:00? Church starts at 11:00 to 1:00. Plus, there's two more churches. So in, in respect to the churches or whatever, you should think, and then when I see the word drink, what kind of drinks are you talking about? You need to elaborate more on your drinks. And, and that's what, if you gonna go by protocol, you need to come to the Civic League, which starts in May, ask to be a speaker for all the members to see and talk to who will be running this establishment, and the information they need to receive. All I'm doing is according to protocol, common courtesy and respect to the Oakwood Civic League, which is a high-traffic area. We have buses and all. Just take that in advice. Planning Council, I sent Ms. McDonald a letter. She did not give it to the Planning Council people. When I got here and put my thing up, I had to give them my letter that I proposed this and why I did. So she did not do her job, but she was in agreement, even though the Planning Council did not get my letter in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Lenny, did the neighbors in the vicinity to the left, to the right, across the street, did they receive notices?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Did notices go out?
We sent a notice out to every property owner within 300 feet of a property. We received no objections from it. There have been no police calls to this location. There's been no problems. They have been operating as a restaurant. As the gentleman who's operating it noted, their hours are extremely limited, their size is limited. This is not a bar. It is basically a food service that wants to have the ability to serve alcohol.
So it was a restaurant. The only thing that's changing is the ownership?
Well, the ownership isn't changing. They are just asking for alcohol opportunity. It's been there with no alcohol. Now they're asking for the opportunity.
Okay, so they're asking for alcohol, alcohol, beer, wine, alcohol?
We don't differentiate because the license would essentially be alcohol served.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Johnson and Mrs. Smigel.
Mr. Newcomb?
Yes.
Did the owners go to the Civic Leagues? That's the question.
The owners made an attempt to contact the Civic League. They were unsuccessful. As noted, Mrs. Jones was ill through the summer. Now, that was not a factor known to us, but apparently they were able not to get in touch with her. There was a contact with her after the Planning Commission. Her letter was distributed to the Planning Commissioners so that they were aware that she had concerns about it. She appeared at the commission, and she spoke in opposition. They listened, but they did believe that the scale and the size and the location of this was not going to cause a harm or a problem.
All right, Mrs. Smigel? My question was about reaching out, but there's a copy of an email in here that was sent on August 1st, so in the packet. You guys included in the packet?
Yes.
So shouldn't they go back to the Civic League? I mean, has the Civic League started their sessions again?
I believe they probably have. I think the last time when they talked to her, she said there was no reason to come because her position was already well-known.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, do you want to correct something, Ms. Judge? If you want to correct something, you can certainly come.
Yes, I did say that at the time of the moment because I was astonished that they had come to us, a different person, two years ago, and we had said no. However, I cannot vote for other people within the Civic League, which has 500 and some houses and uses somewhere around about 20 or 25. I did not get the email. All of this is new to me, and that's the why. It's a protocol for everything, and just because it went to my spam, no one told me to look in my spam for the email. And if I had gotten it or whatever, I would have raised these questions because it's a two hairdressing places, a sewing place, there a food place, and all you got but 28 spots?
When you say 28 spots, what are you talking about? Seating or parking?
Parking, parking. And then it's a contractor truck that's there all the time that I have on my rare occasion have noticed. So out of proper protocol and respect to Oakwood Civic League, I feel that the people who are new, the new management needs to come to the Civic League to voice and ask for permission.
It's not new management.
Oh, whoever brings it.
It's not, they're not new. They're not new. That was a question. Yeah, that was a question that I asked Ms. Simpson, is that it was, it's not new management. All they're seeking is to add alcohol to their sales. It's not new management. It's the same people that have been there with no calls for service and no incidents with the community or anything like that. It's not new people.
But in the letter, they said they had been under different management.
Lenny?
The last time when they appeared to her Civic League, which was several years ago, right?
Two years.
That was another group of people.
Were they seeking to buy it and never bought it, or were...
They came to her to seek an opportunity to come in here and file an application. They met with her, they opposed it, they never filed an application. Somebody else took over the business and has been operating it.
For two years. Okay.
And there's where we are. I mean, it's, the business that's there now has been operated by these people for some time.
Okay. And they would have not had to come before us asking for anything if all they were doing was serving food. They would, if they changed ownership between then and now, and all they did was serve food, there would have been no requirement for them to come to the Civic League. There is no requirement for them to come to the council. There is no requirement for them to do anything except operate their business. The only reason why they're coming before us now is because of the alcohol. That's the only reason. That's the only reason.
And I understand that, Ms. Graves, as I say, two years ago, whoever was in that business, they did come to us. Give us common courtesy and respect. Go by the protocols. It's a new Civic League, different people are coming, different people in the neighborhood lives there. All I ask for common courtesy and respect and protocols according to guidelines.
May I ask a question?
Yes. Before you do, Ms. Johnson was waiting then.
I'm sorry.
Ms. McClellan.
Ms. Simpson-Jones, are you requesting that the Mr.?
Javier.
Javier, um, come to your Civic League meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And it's not just involving just your Civic League, we're talking about the surrounding Civic Leagues as well?
Yes.
So if Mr. Javier was to come to a meeting to address the Civic Leagues, we're talking about many Civic Leagues?
Right.
That you all can coordinate where there are not just one Civic League?
Right.
But the surrounding Civic Leagues to come to meet with you. Is that what you're requesting?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. McClellan?
If this property is adjacent to several Civic Leagues, that would be appropriate. I don't believe that is the case. I believe it's just within one Civic League. Is that correct, Lenny?
That's correct.
So the need for that is negated as a result. What I wanted to ask was, we do rely on Civic League input, absolutely. If you, as a Civic League president, are getting your emails into your spam box, that's not the owner's fault. What, if something's coming from the city of Norfolk, I would assume it would go into your inbox. It's a, it puts the owner in a bad position because a Civic League isn't...
Doing its part.
You're not, you're not accepting the information as it's being sent. And so, it's not their fault. The information wasn't received by you, but that's because of the email protocol or you weren't checking your emails, et cetera. So I have a hard time saying to a small business owner, "You can't move forward because the Civic League wasn't receiving information properly." So what we need to do in general for all Civic League presidents is ensure that we have proper communication.
Well, could you let me know when y'all stop sending out paper and going back, uh, email?
I think that's what we do for...
It's been quiet sometimes.
They still send out paper for 300 feet.
Yeah.
That's around it. So that all the residents or anybody who's around it gets a paper notice.
But I did get the email about that meeting, and I came from...
So you did get that email?
I did get that email, and I called Ms. McDonald.
That wasn't in your spam box?
No, that was not in my spam box. And I called Ms. McDonald. And what kind of bothers me, she had me to do a letter, but then, when I came here, uh, she had not handed them the letter and they had not had, not pumped time to read it.
I think that everybody, I think it was already explained that they all did receive that letter.
They received it, but by the time they made their decision, the letter had not been read.
I'm not sure that's correct, but we'll take a look at that.
Anything else?
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Clerk?
Dispense for the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves.
I appreciate the city taking time to ensure that our Civic Leagues are informed. And what I think needs to possibly happen is that our Civic Leagues and our city, as Andrea mentioned earlier, need to communicate a little bit better. If someone in a position of authority is going to be unavailable to respond to city business as a member of the Civic League, as a representative of their community, then that might be an opportunity for them to delegate that authority or delegate that responsibility to someone else. By the same token, I also, you know, with the fact that this particular owner has been here for a couple of years, with the fact that they don't have any calls for service and they do appear to have a good track record, um, I have a little bit of heartburn if they attempted to do what they were supposed to do and utilized communication tools that are available. I have a hard time mandating that they go back to, um, and basically start from scratch. And so, I will note Ms. Simpson-Jones's objection to, um, to the process. But with all due respect, I think that we want to work with as many small businesses as possible in the city of Norfolk, especially those who have a track record of being good patrons of business in the city of Norfolk. And so, with those things in mind, I vote aye.
Ms. Johnson?
The small business that is in question has good practice. It's a very small business owner in Ward III. It is very important to me that, um, that the community is involved. And my rationale for asking the surrounding communities is because I know, as far as Ms. Simpson-Jones is concerned, uh, she makes contact with other Civic Leagues. Although it only involves her Civic League, she makes contact with other Civic Leagues. I think the small business owner, Mr. Javier, um, did his part. Ms. Simpson-Jones, um, I would ask that you form a partnership with Mr. Javier and vice versa, um, because it only can benefit, um, your community as well as Ward III. So with that, I'm gonna vote aye. And thank you, Ms. Simpson-Jones, for letting us know your objections to the process.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
The only reason I'm gonna vote no is because we're turning into a beer garden. I mean, 8:00 in the morning is too early to be selling alcohol. I understand mimosas and they starting at 11:00 on Sunday, but just think we're just too liberal with our lives, and I vote no.
Mr. Smigel?
Mr. Santos, I would recommend that you invite the Civic League to your restaurant and, uh, give them some free, uh, invite them, have their meetings or go to their meeting and bring a tray of food to them. I've, we, I've had the situation in one of my Civic Leagues, and the Civic League has built a very strong partnership with it, and that owner of that restaurant happened to be on Guy Fieri's show. Um, you know, after the Civic League had some heartburn about it, it turned out to be a pretty good restaurant, Tiana Jesse's. So, um, I think that I just reach out to them, go to their meetings, uh, offer the, serve them some food, or have them come over, do a member night, um, and build those relationships.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
I don't know why just the Civic League's invited. I was hoping we would be invited.
I'm coming.
You can have a margarita at 8:00 in the morning, Jerry.
It was that much sugar, or eight. Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Mary, thank you for coming. And, um, the process that you mentioned, um, you know, it's a clear process that 300 feet of the establishment rece... 300? How, it was 300?
300 feet?
300 feet?
There's a couple houses in that.
And receive notification, um, the criteria for special exception was met as relates to parking and size of the facility and, you know, what we required to get a special exception. At any time that there's a violation of the special exception, we can certainly revoke that special exception. We look at the highest and best use of the land. And so, when you look at what we're asked to consider, Mary, um, this applicant, applicant has met the criteria. Can, can there be a better communication process in getting the Civic League or Civic Leagues more involved? Yes, as a former Civic League president, I think all of us have served in some fashion. We respect that process, and, um, I know that it wasn't as smooth as you would want, but, uh, the applicant meets all the criteria, and it just could not deny, based on the objection. So I vote aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Graves?
Um, you know, at some point, we used to keep a record of all of the Civic Leagues and periodically send letters to them requesting updated information. And maybe we need to go back through that process again from the city and send out a letter, a paper letter, to the Civic League with the addresses that we have and ask for the current officers, ask for, um, updated mailing information as well as emailing information and a backup, a vice president.
I think Mr. Rogers has 120 of them.
Yeah, but I mean, take that list and just scrub it again, mail that information out, request to get it back, and update the information that we have. And also include in that, that we are now emailing those notifications that will come from the Planning Department. And so, and reminding people to check their spam or promotions or whatever they have so that folks will not be caught off guard when they're looking for information in one place and it might just be in another place.
Also, James's department has the Neighborhood Service people that have made those relationships with all the Civic Leagues.
However way we do it, on a periodic basis, but we will do a formal blast. However way we do it, just to make sure we have the most updated information and a backup also, because things do happen and people do get ill or, you know, Civic Leagues are out in the summer. What is, you know, who's a backup person that we can also see?
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry to belabor the point, but, you know, when, when we have applicants who are seeking input from Civic Leagues when there's a long recess, it's challenging. And I don't know exactly how we deal with that, but I don't think it's necessarily fair to hold up a business owner by two or three months because the Civic League is taking a break. So, um, we just need to address that and just be proactive and explain to the Civic Leagues that they'll be receiving the information, it's on their watch to get that information out.
Okay. R12?
R12 is an ordinance requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation establish projects for the surface treatment of seven paved segments in accordance with the programmatic project administration agreement between the city and VDOT, and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the sum of $1 million for these projects subject to and in accordance with the terms and conditions of the aforementioned agreement. Dispense for the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Once again, I'd like to thank Public Works for including Little Creek Road in this plan, desperately needed. Kenny even went down there and pointed out the bumps on Little Creek Road that need... So I'm happy to hear that that's gonna be resurfaced. Thank you. Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R13?
An ordinance requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation to use urban allocation funds to cover additional costs for the Virginia Beach Boulevard Newtown Road Intersection Improvements Project in the sum of $356,000, appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of such additional sum of $356,000 pending reimbursement by VDOT and authorizing the city manager to all things necessary to obtain such additional funding. Dispense for the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R14?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement in substantial conformity with the terms and conditions of Amendment Number Four to the Comprehensive Agreement bound between the City of Norfolk, Norfolk Public Schools, and the S.B. Ballard Construction Company for the design and construction of four schools known as Camp Estella K-8 School, Broad Creek Pre-K to 5 School, Ocean View Pre-K to 5 School, and Larchmont Pre-K to 5 School, with an option to design and build Camp Allen Pre-K 5 School to increase the project budget. Dispense for the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Just wanted to confirm, the increase is really a function of adding the Camp Allen project into that amendment, and that would be federally funded for the most part. Is that correct?
That is the large increase, um, with respect to the four schools that were done before Camp Allen. And two of the schools, um, less than the original budget amount has been spent, even with these additions. And two others slightly more, I think, about $500,000 more in those two, but the less is in the millions, so as a...
So we're coming under budget for the first four?
It will be less than the budget for the original agreement, correct?
Okay. I vote aye. Thank you.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R15?
A resolution establishing the Mayor's Commission on Lifelong Learning.
Adopt the resolution, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Before I vote, I'm gonna call up Ellis James. He didn't indicate whether he's a proponent or opponent, but he did sign. So come and tell us what you, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, my name is Ellis James. Hello, Mr. Smith. I reside here in the city of Norfolk. I think the mayor's on the right track, but I do have a concern. My understanding is, and you all can correct me if I'm in error, that the council actually didn't see the list of this commission until today at best. Now, a lot of these nice people are my friends. These are people that I know well. But my concern is that we not have a commission, especially a commission that is going to not only talk about lifelong learning, but also some of the poverty aspects of what we've been working on for the last year. I don't want to see a commission that doesn't have everybody at the table. And in looking at the list that's attached to the resolution, I see some, I see one person I'm not sure about lives in the city, and I also see some names of people who apparently are pretty busy on other commissions. And so, my concern is simple. I wanna be sure that the chair and the co-chair, um, are comfortable with the fact that this commission being set up now is going to be representative of the various wards and areas of the city that will be the primary concern of people on the council who are trying to make all of this wonderful new representation effective and that we don't accidentally do something that maybe flies in the face of the question of trying to be sure that everybody is at the table on this very important issue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. James.
Can I just address Ellis? Ellis?
Yes.
Just so, let you know, to make the connection with the Poverty Commission, when the Poverty Commission did their full report, um, one of the major aspects that came out of it was education and lifelong learning, which is why we proposed that commission. And so, there is a direct connection to the poverty piece of that, and they'll take the work that was already done from the Poverty Commission and expand upon that. That was, uh, part of the presentation. I think you weren't there at the meeting the day that they went through one of the goals of that commission on that. So they'll carry through that work, that, uh, some of it that was mentioned in the Poverty Commission portfolio. So I just wanted to help you with making that connection to poverty.
Okay, well, I appreciate, I appreciate that, Mr. Smigel, but in looking at the list of names, um, there are a lot of folks on there who are busy, busy, busy people. And so, I'm just a little concerned that, that this isn't quite evolving in the fashion that maybe all of, all of the council members would want it to. But anyway, you, you understand my angst. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Before you leave, Ellis, I think Ms. Johnson wanted to say something.
Mr. Ellis? You and I have had a brief conversation.
Yes.
And if I may address it to make sure that we're on the same path, um, because the Lifelong Learning Commission involves everybody from across this city, because we're one, and that looking at the list, one of your greatest concerns is that the people, the residents and the citizens who we are addressing, which is all of the citizens, all of them are not represented on this list at the table, the ones who are gonna have the greatest impact.
And people can be added, too.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
People can be added.
Yes.
And taken off.
It strikes me that people need to be added. And I just wanted to express this concern because I'm convinced that the people who are gonna lead this effort are good people, and I have no problem there. Dr. Whibley's an old friend, Mrs. Johnson's an old friend, and I know how effective you all are and that you wish to be. And I just, for some reason, I had this uneasy feeling when I got the copy of the resolution in R15. I, as I read it, it, something was not clicking. So, um, maybe that's what happens when you get young, but I'm not sure whether it's...
If it's not clicking, we'll, we'll make sure.
If it's not clicking, we'll make changes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ellis.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis.
All right. Mr. Clerk, do you have any other business under the regular agenda?
Other than your vote? No, sir.
I vote aye. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. All right. Mike McKenna, new business.
Honorable Mayor and council members, my name is Michael McKenna. I reside at 3124 Douglas Road in Chesapeake, Virginia. I'm here tonight in representation of the Norfolk Police Union as the elected treasurer. I'm a 35-year veteran of the Norfolk Police Department. I'm an international representative of the Service Employees International Union, SEIU, an elected vice president of the Eastern Virginia Labor Council, elected representative of the Virginia State Democratic Committee, and a member of the Norfolk-Chesapeake Democratic Committee. I am here tonight to ask that the city reconsider requiring city employees to repay money that is said to be owed to them. I spoke to the city manager over six months ago and referenced this issue, and was told it was being addressed. Currently, many employees are receiving a bill from the city stating they owe to the city for overpayment. Some employees have attended the one-on-one meeting with the city's assigned representatives. They have informed me that many of the questions could not be answered by the representatives. Councilwoman Andrew McClellan, they've requested the employee hotline be started that would answer employees' concerns. Employees inform me that the hotline was recorded line, and they did not receive a callback in many instances. I recently spoke to a police officer that received a notice from the city that he owed some $700 in back wages. Upon meeting with the city official, he was told it was a mistake made, and some other officer owed the $700. He was then told that he only owed $400. As you can see, the pay issues still have not been addressed properly. It has not been determined correctly what is owed to the city or the employee. Documents from the city's Information Systems Department clearly show that the new system was adopted without any prior implementation, even though it was highly recommended. This is before the new city manager took office. There have been many more pay irregularities reported by both employees and departments, the leak system, the overtime calculations. Some employees that received a stipend for almost 28 years have now lost it, even though the funds were allocated into budget. The city has conducted employee elections in the past year, but the committees have not met with the city manager or the department heads for almost a year. The ERC ordinance spells out that the manager is obligated to meet with elected representatives at least four times a year. If the committees had met and had meaningful discussions, these issues may have never occurred. We are requesting that the city conduct a full independent forensic audit conducted by a private certified company of all city employees' pays and benefits so as to correct any concerns. The employees want to correct any overpayments or underpayments, but want it done in a professional, independent fashion. We help you every day, we ask you to help us today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
Yes, Ms. McClellan?
Mr. McKenna, you'll be happy to know that the present, one of the presentations we received in our informal session was from KPMG, our auditor, and they specifically talked about that being a portion of what they'll be doing. They'll be doing an audit on the pay system. So, we'll be, we are looking into that.
Oh, thank you very much.
Mary Simpson-Jones?
Good afternoon again, Mayor and council members. In the month of June, I came to you and addressed a letter to City Attorney Pisco, and I gave some of you a copy. As of this day, I have not heard anything. It's like my time I took here was just placed on a wall or in an area with no response. Out of common courtesy and respect, if I come with a problem or issue, Mr. Pisco should have told me they were looking into the matter or other issues. I have run into other problems with the fall through the bleachers at Bogota T. Washington High School. My letter was very thorough, no questions needed to be answered, but yet, I did not get any respect from you to acknowledge my concerns. I don't know if you're on a high hierarchy, or I'm on a low hierarchy, but whatever it is, I'm a taxpaying citizen, and you should have answered. So I've come before all of you to let you know that my letter was not answered, my concerns was not answered, but yet, I had the double hip replacement, and now I have knee problems. My whole life has been at a standstill, and it seems like you were unconcerned about what happened. But yet again, you wrote a letter for Mr. Burford, and I have done no wrong to you, and you cannot respect me falling through the bleachers. I don't know how you handle your business, but when someone is hurt, it looked like you could take concerns. It was like my letter was just talking to a wall, and you did not pay any attention. I could have written you again, but I did not want to get the same thing from you, not hearing from you or your secretary, you busy this and that. No one's never above the law. Mayor Kenneth Alexander has talked to me and all, but I don't know who you place your importance and your loyalty to. But you need to realize, when people come to you with questions and answers, and with me being in the pain that I am in and my lifestyle, my letter should have been answered, even if we acknowledged your letter. I hope you would take in consideration and act upon my request as soon as possible. Thank you.
Danny Lee Ginn?
My name is Danny Lee Ginn. I reside at 3844 Dare Circle. To do a little bit of housekeeping, I know there was a concern about people coming up here and possibly having weapons, and I want to assure you, I may get emotional, but I don't carry a gun to soothe anybody's concerns. All right, what is being passed to you? A couple of you, a number of you have sat down and talked to me personally, which I very, very much appreciate on a face-to-face basis. And I've taken some of your suggestions to heart. One of the suggestions was that Danny, the only person we hear from when you complain about Paul Riddick is you. You're the only one who comes in week after week. And I took that to heart, so I decided, okay, let's look what other people have to say in regards to the behavior of Paul Riddick. The article you have before you is entitled "Riddick's Norfolk Master Distractor." It concerned Mr. Riddick getting upset over one of his close friends being criticized. It goes on to say, "Riddick suggested in a joint meeting between school officials and city council that they get their neighbors' friends to give them what they deserve," which what, which would be what exactly? "What do the reporters and staffs of the newspaper deserve for doing their job?" Here we have a city councilman who, rather than address the problems that lead to the negative press, feels as a better strategy is to keep the press from taking, talking about the problems. Never mind that the problems will still be clipping the messenger, his preferred tactics. "Don't call members of the community to action to work to fix our schools. Instead, call them to action to express outrage that exists solely in one person's mind. Good government, Norfolk-style, when all else fails, attack the people who give you bad press. Our entire region is familiar with Riddick's annex. They've been the subject of his own bad press enough to fill up an entire section of the newspaper. If a standard could be lowered, however, he's managed to do it with the latest facade." Because if the measurement of an ineffective government official is to waste both his and the taxpayers' time and effort on a crusade that will resolve none of the city's true problems, Riddick has repeatedly and quite publicly met that standard. Now, these are not my words. These are Mr. Colby's words that he delivered in regards to Mr. Riddick. I come here every week simply to represent the people who have come to me, and they wanna know, where do you stand in regards to this kind of behavior? Do you support it? Is it the kind of behavior that you would expect from your council members? I do run into a wall of silence, but I'll be coming back, as you well know. And on that, have a good night.